Standards that are probably consistent with other communities. More type um you know kennels um and certainly he can explain the specific details of the post.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. The uh ordinance you have before you. Is basically identical to the ordinance in effect in Bristol. Um so that's how we came up with these particular restrictions. Uh we put that before the council referred back to you for a decision as to whether it's consistent with the comp plan. Um I can explain why we think it is if that's necessary. Um but other than that, the the ordinance largely.
You know, I I unfortunately, I didn't realize that it was on Franklin Street because there was nothing that was in, you know, the our information. I thought it was at sixty seven Serpentine Road now.
No, no, no. Yes.
Um so I I was set straight by the building official earlier today that, you know, where it is. Um I do know that Franklin Street has is is manufacturing, but it's a mixed zone, isn't it? Um I mean, there's residential as well as manufacturing there. It's kind of a spot zoned area of the town.
It's certainly gonna put limits as to where these things can open up. However, it's not spazily. I mean, anywhere in that area um is technically allowed, however, you gotta fit the criteria that is set upon the standard.
Yeah, so my client has a a lease that's actually already in effect at one thirty Franklin Street. So this wouldn't necessarily make this an allowed use on all of Franklin Street, but just in the main.
See it that way. The 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 difficulty is when you think of a manufacturing zone ordinarily, you think of.
Correct.
You know, and and it's factories and warehouses. Franklin Street is somewhat unique in that it has. Uh manufacturing facilities and houses are interspersed throughout it. So it's it's a slightly different animal. Then we've looked at in terms of manufacturing, um which doesn't. You know, is is not a a com- an obstacle for this, but it it needs to be examined. Particularly in light of the seventy five feet from my standpoint, because if we're within seventy five feet of a house. On that um and there are. Uh. Dogs, for instance, outside there that sound can carry.
Absolutely.
In a manufacturing zone, not as much of a big deal because people are, you know, could be doing anything, you know, soldering or, you know, hanging on metal um.
Yeah, so that's why the special use category is in. So if this. To give further context, if this gets approved ultimately by the council. Then my client will have to petition the zoning board for a special use permit and prove. Uh that she meets the criteria.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, again, I I just want to clarify because I would say, you know, we would have concerns because Franklin Street is not. A typical manufacturing area. This is, you know, this is a a a great ordinance. Uh. The the fact that, you know, in the past, the town. Did not define as clearly as.
Mm hmm.
We would like, you know.
Yeah, it's a shame that, you know, we actually have to. Nowhere in the Warren Code does a dog daycare or kennel exist. So anyone who wants to operate one can't until uh this process is is complete.
Right. And I I mean, the fact that it's in a manufacturing zone is very appealing because, you know.
It's very low risk.
Right. And this is, this is the. We've had issues with folks, you know, breeding dogs in the backyard.
Right. And just while I'm up here, because you do have to look at consistency with the comp plan. Uh page one oh three of the comp plan actually says. Uh and recognizes that most of the buildings remaining in the manufacturing district are utilized. To some lesser extent for small businesses, including studios and workshops as an example. So your manufacturing district really already has to some extent become somewhat commercial. Um and then the economic development policy. Uh two in your comprehensive plan says that you should promote economic resilience. By encouraging a diversity of permitted commercial uses. So your comp plan, which you recently updated, sort of acknowledges that, hey, one of the things we need to do. Over the course of the next ten years is make more uses permitted uses. So that when someone comes in and wants to open a small business. They don't have to go through a ten step process just to have the right to apply for the permit. So that's what, you know, what we're doing here tonight is trying to set the standard. So that my client can make the application and the ordinance we put forward is modeled on on the existing ordinance in Bristol, which seems to be working pretty well.
Great. Um questions, concerns?
Yes. Why are we limited to manufacturing districts?
Is that's what's.
That's what they're looking for.
Well, but it's also that the town council. Passed along to us.
I understand that, but I'm looking for our recommendation. And what's the problem having it to a in a rural district where somebody's got a big. It's like a property wants to put a dog in it. So. It's I think you eliminate these manufacturing just and just make it all special use.
That's not what's being proposed, right? So basically, we have to act on what's being proposed, what was advertised. However, nothing prevents anybody coming forward saying in the future, hey, this is working really well. We want to uh extend this to this this everyone. This that's certainly an option and that's normally how it works.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it wasn't limiting.
No, it's not limiting. Anybody come in the future and say, you know what, not just manufacturing, but. A a different area of town that um makes also sense in, you know, the whole creative use in the community. Yep.
Okay, anything else? Um. Then I'd make a motion that we you know uh approve. Oh, that we recommend that we, the town council approve the um zoning change as written. Um with the uh concerns that uh its proximity to a residential. Either a house or an area is taken into consideration. Um given in this particular case, the mixed. Situate the the mixed use here, so.
Um yeah, that'd be my biggest thing. You're just making sure, especially I live in that area. We're seeing a lot of families start to turn over. The new generation is coming in. A lot of. New families are coming in and I just hate to see it where they come in and next thing you know, they have thirty dogs out their back fence barking all day. So. I agree. I think the language is suffices and the recommendation I concur, but. Definitely need to take into consideration the proximity when allowing these to residential.
In in addition, when it goes back to council, as I said, the law.
Yeah.
The neighbors will be notified.
Yep.
Certainly can allow. Okay, so they had concerns about.
So therefore, or go ahead.
Yeah, and I'll just add to this particular business is gonna be totally inside.
Yeah.
Um but obviously, the ordinance anticipates. Uh you you could have one that's outside, but if you do, you would need to comply with provision D. Two, where outside access exercise area, if any, buts a residential use or zoning district, there shall be a setback. Uh of seventy five feet.
Yeah.
So this should adequately address that concern, uh we hope.
Okay.
We are. We actually do have a kennel here in town. Warren Animal Hospital is a kennel.
I won't comment on that.
Oh.
They get dogs.
Go ahead, Rick. Uh Jenny's speaking.
Uh if is there anything in here that talks about the density of animals in the building?
Uh in this version of the ordinance, there is not. However, the state um regulations in order to be licensed. Do speak to that. And one of the items that the council at our first meeting that I was involved with. They said, when you come back to us, can you make a proposal about density? And we said we would. Uh we just haven't quite gotten there yet because fortunately, they were willing to do this very quickly. Um because my client is under an existing lease agreement. So the answer is, the state has requirements to that effect. But before we go back to the council, we intend to uh propose additional language to discuss density mirroring that language.
Do you know what the state density is?
I haven't. Uh I can, I can. Tell you if you give me just one moment.
Yeah. I i- if if the council's gonna be asking for that density. Uh it it seems to me that that should be part of our recommendation.
Do you?
Yeah, okay, and certainly it sounds like they're they're planning on doing it anyway.
Yeah, I can speak to it. Um they have recommendations for the kennel sizes and it's like with. Length and height of each dog. And then they also have play areas, which is obviously the square footage of the building. So it's uh ten square foot per dog.
Okay, so that's the state standard.
Yes, that's the state standard. And they will have to come out and do an inspection after I get town approval.
Six twenty five square feet.
Oh, twenty four square feet.
Yes.
Per animal.
Per animal, per play area.
For for dogs specifically, if it were a different animal.
Always a cattery or something.
Uh but we're primarily concerned.
We want even more room for the cat.
Um but yes, so our 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 intentionality is to to review this and the council told us, they said, look. If we don't like the density restrictions you propose, we're not gonna approve it. So they're going to tell us. Um what they think is reasonable. We just haven't. Put put that forward yet and we wanted to come to this board with the same proposal that was before the council a couple of weeks ago. We go back, we intend to supplement further.
Great, okay.
Okay.
Uh. Forgot the point, so continue, sorry.
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend with those uh concerns noted. They're not conditions, obviously. They're. Guidelines and it sounds like they've been. Uh you know, they will be responded particularly in this situation uh anyway, so.
I I I assume that that, you know, when council gets approval for something, that that's generally contingent on any state regulation that's required.
Yes, it's not private state law, but I think it is. So some cases can be more restricted.
Okay, so so we don't necessarily have to put into the zoning bylaw. That it must also meet state regulations for kennels because that's presumed. Okay.
Done, huh? But yeah, probably you're done then.
Sorry, Allison, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, as far as you can't put in a. The requirement. Do you see that in some ordinances, but not that you necessarily need to, but uh I mean, I guess I. Didn't have patients indoors, but I think some of my concerns are with outdoor kennels. So I I see in other uh. Zoning ordinances of like a maximum number of runs when we're talking about outdoors, just to control that, you know. Use factor um and potentially like a having a a minimum lot size requirement as well. Usually they're on larger lots, so. Uh those are just a couple of things that I noticed. And this, the standards that were listed here, little little minimal, little light of standards, you could add a couple more, but that was just. Uh this is a global change of.
Right.
To uh the important. So those are a couple of options.
So getting back to the state ordinance for outdoor runs, does the state have um standards for density of of runs beyond the size of the ones themselves?
Uh we're not prepared to answer that question, but we we don't believe so.
Yeah.
In terms of the number of times you're allowed to let the animals outside.
I just know that it's the time of day that the state does have regulations. You can't let them out past ten P M.
But the nice thing about doing this as a special use permit. Is that any particular applicant, this gets approved and it's permitted in the manufacturing district. Anyone who wants to do it will have to go before the zoning board and explain their particular project. And then that can be conditionally approved as may be necessary, given its exact location.
Yeah, again, I think that Allison's point of um, you know, the fact that this is an an uh an ordinance that will be. Universal for the town um that a a. Uh again, uh another concern is the um. Amount of space if there is an outdoor component to the um to future. Kennels um be added as as one of our concerns and that. Um the as as previously noted, the distance from that outdoor. Kennel to the residential area should probably be. I I would not, I'd I'd rather not go with seventy five. I'd rather seventy five feet. I'd rather look at it. Uh because the zoning board can often be very. Uh specific about what the zoning regulations allow. The planning board has a tendency to be a little bit more. Open on this and um. I I I wanna make sure that the zoning board. Doesn't have the feeling that, okay, if we allow a kennel and there's an outdoor portion. It's seventy five feet and they've met. But. You know, to speak to Blake's concerns as well.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I I think seventy five feet, I did some like use some quick calc, like that brings ninety decimals down to fifty three, which is almost talking. So. You know, I think that's would be my biggest concern is noise. But I mean, Allison, do you have any proposed language you think? Because are we making just a recommendation, yea or nay, or like, is there?
Recommendation, but you also can't uh show up.
There are levels.
Your install.
I mean, my my biggest thing is we don't open it as software like. I think, you know, what you're doing indoors is great. Like, it's not about your application, but about what we open ourselves up to. Is there any language where? You know, as this develops and we're like, wait a minute, we need to reconsider us that we may be able to put in that ordinance. That's kind of like a catchall to say where we don't set like. Precedents like this is the ordinance seventy five feet. That's it. You're good to go.
You can't get specific.
Yeah.
I mean, like has the chair said, Allison said, once you create it, it means for anybody in any location. And if you set the criteria seventy five feet, somebody meets that. And then um maybe a lot of people do it.
Have we ever done like a review period of a new ordinance where like after three years, it's up for review where we can make a amendments to it or no?
This.
I don't know.
Where the sunset at the same time and people have vested rights and.
Yeah, yeah.
Grandfathered it and, you know, this is gonna be the legal issues.
Yeah, I get it. Okay.
Yeah, um again, you know, the the major concern here, as you can see and hear, is noise and. As it relates to a residential area, um. When it is, you know, and that also speaks to density. Um so our concern is just to ensure that and. Let's, I I would say, let's take the seventy five feet, seventy five feet or more. Perhaps as a a way of of dealing with this so that it's not. Seventy five feet, we're we're done.
Yeah, right. It could be a hundred, like outdoor run has to be a minimum of a hundred feet from the property line.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about the in this next one cannabis has to be a hundred feet away from a.
Yeah.
A residential house and there's not a sound that you're gonna hear out of a cannabis thing, you know, so I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we really, we're not opposed to any restriction on the outdoor space because. You know, our doesn't, you know.
So let's.
Let's.
You're competitive.
It would almost be better if you didn't allow it outside. But in all fairness, I think seventy five feet is is what Bristol does. I don't know that. There's been a problem with it.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Is it, is there any like?
The only drawback to Bristol is, you know, they are also allowing really large houses to go up on top of fifteen foot. Uh footings, so I don't necessarily take Bristol as the um.
And and their manufacturing district is compact, defined, and not next to a lot of residential.
Well, in Bristol, I don't, their ordinance isn't tailored to the manufacturing district.
Ah.
But um. But again.
And I and I understand why you're coming, you know, why you're presenting that. It makes perfect sense.
I mean, it, you know, I don't think we would have any objection if you wanted to increase the the amount of. Feet away from residents for out a hundred feet, right? It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not material.
To your.
To us, but I, you know, at some point. You know, the, what is the implication of it? If if you wanna promote, you know, commercial uses, you gotta think about what that is. And I think if you. Um member Costa has done that research about the decimal level at seventy five feet. It seems pretty reasonable.
I like the idea of that language of minimum and that gives us some. Input there, like if we see something set in an area where maybe. Sounds can be treated different as having this big structure next to you where we can now. Have some leeway to say, hey, look, the setback's not sufficient enough due to this surroundings.
You can always log it.
Yeah.
There's a particular situation, they can always go to the metro area and stuff.
Okay, yeah, do that. Um great, so there it is. Those are our concerns. Did we all get that or? Okay, um this can I have a second?
Just for outdoor.
Well, do we need to uh include in the? Recommendation to change seventy five feet to one hundred?
Yeah, we just did, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be included.
Uh second.
All in favor?
Uh yeah.
Those opposed? Good luck.
Thanks for your time.
Um second is uh the. Chapter D zoning ordinance, articles uh twenty three, definition, section thirty two dash one thirty. And section thirty two dash twenty one, criterias for for specific categories of special use permits. Amendment to zoning ordinance will allow for the retail sale of cannabis products in the business and rural business zoning districts of the town. Um. I'm. I don't know if this was stimulated by a particular application or.
So so Mr. Chair, on this specific ordinance, uh the town voters did vote to allow the town to uh create. An ordinance that would allow retail cannabis. Some of this ordinance that you see here is already in place. For example. Uh the non-residential cooperative cultivation is already in place. The residential cooperative cultivation is again in place. Personal marijuana cultivations in place and a license uh cultivated is already in place. That's not new language. Well, we're really talking about here is the area of um retail and also of the lab. Uh language, that's that's cannabis test laboratory, that's new and also the cannabis retailer. Uh so by the vote is basically said, you don't have to do this. However, if. The town wants to do this, you can do it. How you do it is by. Creating uh language inside the ordinance that allows for retail and also lab. That's what's being proposed. I believe there was an individual that was uh present at the town council meeting that gave some input. I'm not sure, started the process, but certainly um with part of council, they sent it here. Um. And here we are.
Before we get started, just full disclosure, I'm one of seven owners and operators of a Rhode Island cannabis business. I do not see any ethical. Reasons for me to accuse myself. However, I'm a subject matter expert on this and I present to planning boards on the east coast up and down. Um I have about over a dozen operational businesses throughout the east coast and I started here in Rhode Island, so. I'm here for a resource. Um I have a lot of positive feedback. Uh. I know for myself, I'm one of, you know, we're all looking at the new licenses, the state's issuing twenty two new licenses. As part of that new license, you gotta have a real estate property locked in and it has to be approved, zoning and planning. So I'm assuming this goes along with that. Um, you know, at this point in the state. You know, if you assume a fourteen million dollar cannabis business does about six hundred transactions a day, meaning you see about six hundred people. An operation in this town would be at most. You know, a third of that five million dollar business. So, you know, you're probably gonna do about two hundred transactions a day to put that into context. The biggest challenge with this isn't as much as the security. The safety of it because you do have overwhelming state regulations you have to adhere to and requirements. It's traffic. And then, of course, um an issue I'm running to now as an owner in Exeter, Rhode Island, is I. Had a zoning violation for light pollution, which I didn't realize. I, even though I was dark sky compliant. People are still affected by light, so we have to work with that. So it's, I think a lot of it's um. After hour lighting because a lot of these places wanna light up like the sky, so making sure they're protected on the lighting. And then the other thing I see that's a challenge is traffic. Um. You know, like I said, two hundred people can go to this store a day, so just making sure that that's taken in consideration. Those are my comments. I just wanted to do that disclosure.
That's hugely helpful.
Yeah.
Um. What, do you know, just uh for curiosity's sake, if it's, you know, a five million dollar operation, two hundred people a day? How does that compare to like a? A liquor store or a, do you, I do you know, I I or another retail establishment?
You expect an individual to be inside a store. I know individuals stay in my store. I see six hundred people a day in Exeter. Daily and they spend on average five minutes. The average customer is a forty six year old female that comes to our store. As far as how it compares to a liquor store, um it's a different type of consumer base. Um that's their daily. The average consumer comes to a cannabis shop two and a half times a month. Um they're in and out. Usually their first couple of visits are being educated, then they know what they want. Um, you know, when I first started my first store in Maryland seven years ago, you know, my average consumer was. The state, I was in an affluent area. It was a stay at home mom that traded the wine glass at night for an edible or a joint and, you know. Those are your average consumers. It's not the pothead. No one punches a cop when you're high on weed. Let's put it that way, right? So that's a big difference from cannabis and alcohol. Um but as far as the operations, I would say they're much more regulated. They're much more organized. Um and I mean, I get inspected nonstop every week. I have a different inspection at one of my stores. So the state has. Very detailed oversight. It's probably the most regulated industry in the state right now.
I mean, the the traffic is is probably one of the concerns that would be, you know, the light is something we can handle with. Shielding um and, you know, ordinance that already exists for light pollution in the town is up. I'm. Pretty sure we have that because we've used it before with other developers. Um but the the traffic would be the a factor, you know, particularly in terms of. Somebody wanted to open something on Water Street, for example.
Yeah, and that, yeah. But I mean, even on um. Market Street, you know, the things you'd have to consider is. You know, I'm trying to put a traffic light on Route Two and South County Trail right now with DOT. Like, there's. But that's where I could see, especially where us, where we don't have a lot of stoplights. Is that being the biggest impact is how traffic is coming out of these establishments onto our roadways.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just a few more items um associated with this uh amendment. Uh, of the current ordinance on to create uh retail in town. Um, it's not guaranteed, just because you allow it um in town, um, it's a lot of resources.
Yeah, I got mine, someone with a blindfold on picked my ball, and I got one of ten licenses they gave out. So it's gonna be a lottery, it's not guaranteed, and there's a lot of other requirements for the state they have to satisfy before they can proceed. I don't know how the licensing fee is gonna change, but it's capital intensive. These can cost upwards of a million dollars just to open your doors. That also does not include that half a million dollar license fee we currently pay the state just to stay open every year.
Good God, Mr. Chair, this is also only proposed the cannabis retailer and the lab. In the business, in rural business zones only. That's what's being proposed via special use permit, and that's what you see here on page three. Is the status that um they would examine when an applicant came forward and began to process opening one of these establishments.
Okay, I see, uh, you know, other than, uh, you know, to be aware of traffic concerns and. Uh, light, uh, you know, outdoor lighting, um, I don't see any other. Changes, I didn't see this as a.
And just odor mitigation would be one that I would add in there, odor mitigation. Just ensuring that like somewhere near that, and that can go through the special use permit process, but. Ensuring the applicants take odor mitigation seriously, because that's the only other. Only other issue you're gonna have, not only other, but you are gonna have odor leak from there at some facilities, if they don't manage it properly.
So what I would suggest, uh, Mr. David Blake Costa, uh, is that, and it's the language we put in here in addition to. The regular special use permit standards, which has, you cannot cannot create a nuisance. In the community, cover the traffic, cover the odor, and then only only those, in addition to the ones that are specified here, uh, being proposed. So we'll cover some of those basic items that you just talked about, if we had add that language in here, so in addition to. You also have to fill our traditional specialties permit standards.
Perfect. Great, um.
Question, um, in the use table, um. Looks like licensed cultivator and cannabis testing laboratory are almost identical. Um, uh, but I'm not, it looks like, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly or not, um. It looks like cannabis retailer is permitted, no, sorry, licensed cultivator is permitted in the BB zone. It's set that, is it, those line up identically in the zones, the table doesn't quite carry over straight.
And there's one that's different, the BB doesn't go into cannabis.
That's, it it looks like cannabis testing lab is not permitted in a BB zone while the cultivator is, and that doesn't make sense. But I don't know whether I'm missing something or whether the table's not lining up.
I mean, a cannabis testing lab is gonna be our least impactful, we talk about, so.
W is the same.
I'm sorry, what was that, Blake?
W is with, as in the contest, the testing lab is is W, but not, the other one doesn't.
Yeah, I, it, um, I think the the table doesn't translate to the second page straight, I think. I withdraw my question, it looks like, it's all right.
All right, uh, so, um, motion to approve uh the uh order recommend approval. With the concern second from Rick, all in favor? Aye, aye, those opposed? Okay, last on the list is the, uh. Article twenty sign regulations, section thirty-two dash uh one-one-one, definition, section thirty-two. One-twelve, amend the ordinance to can to include feather banners as a non-permitted sign. Um, the sign, the the town does have business sign regulations. But there's been a proliferation, as I understand it, and as I've seen, uh, of these feather banners that, um. It's not just one, it's six, and they're uh turn of business. Are and and really make a mockery of our sign ordinance, because you've got these feather banners up. And in some cases, apparently on Main Street, for example, it gets in the way of people walking down the street, so. Um, you know, our, this is essentially saying, closing that loophole.
It is, again, Mr. Chair, I believe this was uh, um, proposed by the building official. Please came in that is, um, these. Uh, feather banners are showing up everywhere, very difficult to regulate, because it's a gray area, and just to clear the language. It's a complete prohibition of uh people using this to become a safety hazard, high winds, I mean, that was. But they built an official, not testifying, but presented, also, and certainly this will give you the teeth to force. Uh, those banners.
I'm all for that. Anyone else?
I mean, I hate to be like the cog in the wheel here, but. You know, we are promoting new businesses coming to this town, I think feather banners have their place, and it's not for everyday use, it's for like temporary. Hey, we're open, come see us, if you've ever been a small business owner, you know how hard it is to get people into your stores. I mean, would anyone be willing to consider like a permanent process where it's, hey. I'm motion, and I know, I can see, or I know you don't wanna go through this, but this is why I'm here, so you're gonna go through it, buddy. I mean, why can't we just say, hey, you got it, you can do it, you know, a two-week, cause I I just went through this in River Edge, New Jersey. Same thing, they took all our signs away, I'm trying to get people into my store. So what do I do? I do attention, I put feather banners out, I go to the building official, I get a permit. I get a thirty-day approval, after thirty days they have to go down, I mean. From your standpoint, I know that's extra workload, outside of looking at the workload, is there a re, I mean. Cause then that gives you the subjectivity, if we can put something in there where, yeah, it doesn't make sense to have it on a sidewalk where you're interrupting traffic. When you have a, someone on Market Street, as that gets developed and they're opening a new retail, it may make sense for thirty days to drive traffic in there.
So first, I'll say that I'm very pro-business, um, we invite business in the town, uh, as we've seen the growth. The problem with these feather banners are, they're they're showing up everywhere, they're very tough to, for me to. Police would call it, they do pose a safety issue, cause if they're not secured properly, they fly around. Um, they are an eyesore, because it depends on what size, you know, we, in in our zoning ordinance, we have. Uh, restrictions on how much signage could be at each, um, parcel. So if we allow these, and and I understand what you're saying, because people do open up, they wanna let, you know, hey, I'm open. But if we allow this, where do we stop? Do we allow them to have a three-foot feather banner? Do we allow them to have a ten-foot feather banner? Um, this came, we had a complaint, and I went out and when I went out to to the site for the complaint. The the owner turned around and said, look at all these other places, and I went around and looked, and one of them. Was a car dealership, that they put one on every car, there was, so, um, it's it's not in any way, shape or form to deter from business. It's more for safety and and almost, um, just a a scenic pollution of of too much signage. Um, it's a way to to for us to keep what's allowed there and not extra signage, and and I I understand about, you know. For new businesses, but then now it's, how do I regulate thirty days, ten days, five days? Um, there are, uh, we do allow, uh, like a a sandwich board to go out.
Yeah.
So, um, but these, there there are other communities in the state who have banned these as well, because of the 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 safety issue, but also. The amount of space it takes, the the distraction it takes, um, so that that's just, that's why I brought it.
Yeah.
Except to be a restriction on a, uh, there have to be such a distance from a public right of way.
Do we have one, or are you asking?
What, why don't we have?
You don't wanna put restrictions after restrictions and ask one person to do a job. Um, I I can, I I do many, I wear many. Um, but to to say, uh, now we have to, I, so now I would have to go out there and measure.
Leasing it, leasing it up would be a pain in the butt.
I mean, going back to my original comments, hearing our professionals' response, right, I think. We always need to support our professionals and understanding what you're seeing out there. The workload it can, you know, have on you, and we all know that we run a pretty lean government here in Warren. Um, I mean, you have my support, like I support this initiative, I think it just warranted a quick conversation with the professional that's proposing this before I make a comment, so. I support the direction we're going right now with this, I just hope as a community and as we develop and as we get. You know, more businesses here and, you know, things continue to pick up, we we stay open to reconsidering these things in the future.
Let also the control flag hanging off the front of a building, saying open or?
No, that's different, these are, these are feather banners, it's a specific, there's actually a. Uh, definition that goes along with this ordinance as to the exact what a feather banner is.
I know what a feather banner is, I'm, I'm concerned also with the flag poles that hang out over the sidewalks.
It is regulations in thousands, in terms of uh, of all of our side law. Certainly it's extensive.
You've got the same visual effect. As a feather banner. Uh, it almost seems like a restraint of trade. Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna, um, you know, I, unfortunately, I've seen this proliferate in this town in a way that is, you know. Made the streets ugly, um, and to me, it's like, I understand. Blake's concerned, unfortunately, you know. Not everybody's responsible, and as soon as you open that door, I think, uh. You know, it's it's been frankly a long time coming for a number of businesses that. You know, simply don't need them, it's, and it's a distraction as well to drivers, particularly if you've got a bicycle. Riding along the road and there's some guy in a car, and you've got fluttering banners all over the place, so. Uh, anyway, I'll I'll make a recommendation that, uh, we, uh, that the town council approved this as written. Uh, do I have a second?
A second then.
Second, Tim, all in favor? Aye, aye, those opposed?
Mr. Chair also, a lot of members.
Yeah.
Businesses in common, and. So it's all an opportunity for brothers.
Yeah, for sure, oh. Done our part, um, we're, uh, fifteen minutes away from starting, so we'll take a break here, um. Uh, cocktails will be served. No, what?
You didn't bring any?
Okay. is uh Settlers Green, major subdivision land development project. Comprehensive, this is under the comprehensive permit preliminary plan phase. Owner is last ever realty. The location is plat twenty, lot sixteen, one fifty-nine and one sixty-four. This is a continuation of the public hearing from the previous regularly scheduled meeting of the Warren Planning Board in September. Uh, the project description is a residential development, including twelve single-family dwelling units. Two four-story garden apartment buildings containing fifty-four units each, uh which are one and two-bedroom units. Um, we are going to begin the meeting with uh the presentation that attorney Landry of the applicant was um had, had begun, but without having the information in front of us, we suspended the hearing. Uh, the same was true of uh rebuttal that uh attorney Ryan from the opposition was going to present, but again, we just received that information um an hour beforehand. And so our feeling was, we want to ensure that this is, this hearing is based on uh appropriate review and uh consideration of all of the material. So where, this is where we are now. Um, so I'd ask attorney Landry to come forward. Uh, once he has made his presentation um regarding the two maps that, uh I believe that was, that was the, the focus. Um, then attorney Ryan will uh have uh time for his rebuttal. We will open it up to the public for comment, but only on the matter of traffic. Um, the uh traffic, anything else, whether it's you know, blasting or environment, will not be heard because we have heard those. We all did receive the binder that was provided, um and uh looked at that. We received the information from attorney Landry as well. Um, and a uh summary from uh our representative from Fussin O'Neil. Uh, so we have all of this information and we are ready to proceed. So attorney Landry, um.
Mr. Chair, before attorney Landry starts speaking, also, uh, for the record is the letter from the fire chief that was received by the board in advance of this meeting is also part of the record.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Massey. I do have a couple of questions uh for a couple of my witnesses to complete what we had uh planned to present. And I'd also like to ask the fire chief uh a few questions. Uh, since the last meeting, we received his letter. Uh, we have our architect uh here to respond to that letter. But I don't expect more than uh a few, a few questions of a number of people. And I think we can move through it very quickly. Uh, the first one would be uh Karen Beck. Please, if she could come forward. She's been previously sworn.
Fire chief's gonna be a little late.
I, I understand that. I know he's got a uh test or some, some testing or something, but that's fine. We can, whenever he arrives, uh, is fine. Uh, Ms. Beck, you've been previously sworn, correct?
I have.
Here, I have a couple of questions that I need to ask you, but first, we've arranged for the uh secretary to have two exhibits presented on the screen. Exhibits thirty-five and thirty-five first and then thirty-three. Five of the cross-sections.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Beck, I, I'm showing you uh what was submitted, uh.
Hold on a second. Can we turn off the square, square lights?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a, an exhibit that was submitted some time ago to the town. We, we labeled it as exhibit thirty-five and entitled it, uh, three cross-sections appearing on one uh plan sheet prepared by Principi Engineering. You familiar with this uh exhibit?
Yes.
And, and do I understand correctly that the first two uh cross-sections, the one on the top and the one in the middle are intended to show uh perspective and scale from uh different viewpoints. The one on top being uh o- over to the right is Kick and Mewit. And then uh the view scape and viewpoints in proportion and scale over to the first apartment building going uh east to west, correct?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell me how Principi Engineering went about preparing uh these uh cross-sections?
Sure. Well, we have in AutoCAD the existing contours or topography on the site. All the way across the street uh on uh Kinnicket. And we have our proposed contours as well. So what this reports to show is the existing conditions topography and the proposed conditions topography. If you were cutting the site on an east-west uh angle. So on the far right-hand side, um is an existing single-family residence on Kinnicket with their front yard, with the car parked in the front yard. Then Kinnicket Road with the two different directions, um going north, south on Kinnicket. Then there's a small area of, um, it's not a uh paved sidewalk, but it's a walkable um grass area. And then we're introducing our, one of our fire retention sand filter basins for stormwater control. And as you can see, the topography is proposed to rise up for the berm to control that stormwater. Then it comes down into the interior where the stormwater control is. There's a fairly large basin there. Then you get to another rise in elevation, which is where the access and parking for the first apartment building is. So we have park, we have the tree shown. Uh, we have the parking, the two different directions. So we have park, we have the tree shown, we have the parking, the two different directions, the access aisle, another row of parking, a sidewalk, some landscaping, and then the apartment building. Now that cross-section shows to the height of the roof. It doesn't show any ins and outs, it doesn't show windows or any of that information. It's strictly a line drawn on the plan to show you how high the very peak of the roof would be for those four stories from the ground elevation. As you can see, there's a dimension that's shown from the facade of the single-family residence, existing single-family residence on Kinnicott, all the way to the facade of the building, of the apartment building. It's 312 plus feet.
If I could stop you, the, the house across the street way over to the right, you're just capturing a portion of that house, correct?
Yes, it's just the facade again.
So if I, if I'm standing in this, looking in this direction, I guess it'd be south to north. And that, that house across the street would be on my right. That's, that's the, the scale that I would see of that single-family home, correct?
Right. They're allowed 35 feet, and so that's what I'm showing on that particular instance. And then again, it's to the top of the roof, and then for the apartment building, top of the roof. This would be like you were standing on the new entrance road, looking north. So the existing single-family residence would be on your right, Kinnicott would be on your right. You'd be looking into the detention basin, and then as you go into the site, you would get to that first apartment building.
And that, and that first apartment building, if I understand correctly, is a little over 50 feet, correct?
Yes.
So we're talking about a difference in height of roughly 15 feet, maybe a little more, from the top of the single-family home on the right to the top of the apartment building on the left.
From peak roof to peak roof, yes.
350 feet away, correct?
312, yes.
312, and between, and now you see, I see a couple of vehicles that presumably are sitting in Kinnicott Road. And then there's, then there's a person to the west of those vehicles that's
That's correct.
A little taller than the buildings themselves, correct?
A little taller than the
Than the vehicles themselves. And then moving further to the west, there's a berm there, is there not?
That is correct.
And at its peak, that berm appears to be significantly taller than the person, correct?
Yes, so if you were driving on Kinnicott, or a pedestrian on Kinnicott, or someone in the front yard on a single-family lot, you would be looking at the berm of basin, basically. And then the apartment building would be, again, 300 feet away, and you would see the upper stories of the building.
Upper stories, okay. And that, that just shows two trees on the whole plan. Do I recall correctly that that area along Kinnicott there is, is more heavily vegetated than that?
Yes, we're showing, I can't remember the number of trees along Kinnicott, but we are proposing trees along Kinnicott, we are proposing trees throughout the, the development. This is, again, just a singular cross-section through the site, so that you could get a sense of how tall the trees would be between the single-family residence on Kinnicott and that first apartment building.
That, that tree, I would say, looks maybe three or four times as tall as the person that's standing next to it.
Yeah, and that, those, if I remember correctly, those are only like ornamental trees. They're not meant to be very large shade trees.
So let's look at the second cross-section. That's one that's looking north and south, is it not?
It's a north-south cross-section, so it's looking east-west. So on, in this particular instance, on the far-right side, we're looking at, and I believe it's Denver?
Yes.
Denver Avenue, Street, Road. So there's a single, a row of single-family residences on that road, so you have the facade of those structures, their front yard, then the road, existing roadway with the vehicles being able to travel in two directions on that road. Then we have our, our proposed single-family residences. So we've got the, the front yard on the existing road, the building itself, which again, can only be 35 feet to the peak of the, of the building, the rear yard of that building. Then we're required to have a screen, a 10-foot-wide screening buffer between those two. And that's what the darker, like evergreen-looking tree and the shade tree in the middle is proposed to do. So there's a whole row of trees and evergreens that will be, be between those two rear yards. Next rear yard, next single-family residence, front yard, onto the new roadway. Again, you can see the two cars heading in two different directions for the new proposed roadway. Then we have a landscape buffer, then we have an access drive, then we have parking, then we have sidewalk, front landscaping in front of the apartment building, and then the apartment building itself. So in this particular instance, we've got 384 feet between the, the single-family residence existing on Denver all the way to the facade on that proposed apartment building.
So if I were to put all that in simpler terms, we're looking here at what is between you and a 50-feet-or-so building, if you're looking from Denver Avenue. When you're explaining, you, you look, you look toward that building from Denver Avenue. At first, you encounter a row of, of trees that's taller than you are, correct? And then there's a house that can be 35 feet high, that would be built as part of this development.
Yes.
And then you're looking past that, correct?
Yes.
And then you're looking past a row of evergreens that's growing in between that house, the back of that house on Denver Avenue, at the back of the house that would be part of this development that actually fronts on Dallas Avenue, correct?
Correct.
And then after you look past that, you see another large, another row of, of trees, vegetative buffer, correct?
Yeah.
And then another, and then yet another row of trees on the other side of Dallas Avenue, correct? And then a parking lot, and then that building, which may be a little more than 15 feet higher than that house across the street, and the two houses that are in between the apartment buildings, building in that house across Denver Avenue, correct?
Right, to the peak of that building.
All right, so then you're, you're pretty lucky to be able to even see the peak of the apartment building if you're standing, if you're standing on Denver Avenue, correct, or driving on Denver Avenue.
That's correct.
Now, the third cross-section's a little different than the other two, correct?
Yes.
Could you explain to us what we're looking at there?
So there has been a, a lot of conversation about the floodplain on the property and what would happen in the future, well, now that the dams have been reviewed, removed, and also with global warming and all those other things like that. Principia Engineering does a ton of work in both DEM jurisdiction as well as in coastal jurisdiction. We're very familiar with going to the host, Coastal Hazard, interactive mapping, filling out the Coastal Hazard form. And in this particular instance, what I wanted to show was, so on the far-right-hand side is the closest apartment building. And that apartment building also has the lowest elevation of all of the proposed structures on the site. And so that's the building facade on the far-right-hand side. Then as you can see, there's small landscaped area, sidewalk, parking, the access aisle with two-direction vehicles, more parking. Then we have another one of our detention basins with the berm on the far-left side, and then travels quite a distance. So our disturbance from the facade of that apartment building to our most extensive amount of grading disturbance, et cetera, that's 264 feet. From that point, there's another 373 feet to the Kickin Mewit River. We are showing the floodplain elevation, and I'm sorry, but I have to. Can you make it bigger? Yeah, sure. So this, I, I can speak loud and I, can you make it bigger?
Okay, so what you're looking at is the green dash line, if you can see that, goes all the way across, is the existing topography. We are filling in order to raise the elevation of the work that we're doing on the site for a number of reasons, including making sure that all of our impervious surface areas drain to our detention basins. The blue line that you see there up top is the 2060 peak hundred-year elevation, which is at 20.3. Our building, if you can scroll over just a teeny bit. Nope, that one. Okay. What you can see is, we have a building floor elevation, it's a slab elevation, there's no basement, okay? No crawl space. It's a slab elevation, which is at 22 and change. And as I said, the 2060 hundred-year elevation is at 20 change. So we're just a little bit above the elevation of the floodplain in 2060, which accounts for the rise in floodplain elevation, okay? The existing current floodplain is only elevation, I believe, either 10 or 12. That's what we're required to address currently today, and which was reviewed by the Department of Environmental Management as part of our submission to them, so that they know what, knew what we were doing and approved of it. So that 10 or 12 elevation, we are 10 feet above that with our proposed conditions. And in 2060, we're still above the 100-year floodplain elevation.
There's a contradiction in plan to what you just said. Are you saying the base flood elevation of the western building is 22.5 feet?
To be honest with you, I, I, I can't read it on the plan.
Because on page three of the preliminary plan package, it says 20.5. So you're actually only two tenths of a foot
Okay.
Above that 2030, 2060 level.
So for current conditions, which is, the floodplain is at 10 or 12, I can't, again, I can't remember for sure which, which it is. We're 10 feet above, 12, okay. So we're eight feet above the 12 today, as approved by the Department of Environmental Management. In 2060, if the 100-year floodplain is at 20.2, we're at 20.5.
And that, you're that eight feet or nine feet above what the regulatory regimen requires right now. You're holding a permit from the Rhode Island Department of Environment. Now, you, your permit likely that, that level of fill to get to the 20-point, whatever it is, elevation. Can that level of fill be increased in a way that provides even further protection from future increases in flood elevations?
We could, the issues become not having slopes on the impervious surface areas that are too steep or don't meet Americans with Disabilities Act, the 2%. So we're kind of constrained in terms of trying to get the flow to go from this building and this impervious surface area into that rear basin. We don't want to raise it up too much, and then we start having grading issues. But we could raise it a little.
Okay, that's all I have for you, Ms. Beck. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the street trees. The, we're going to move to the last exhibit, Exhibit 33. And that's the revised street tree plan. What, what are we looking at here?
At one of the meetings, I believe the tree warden, this group was here, and what they were concerned with the way we were addressing the amount of trees throughout the parking area. We had looked at it from the perspective of, we knew that there was, I believe, a 15% minimum requirement for interior landscaping within the parking lot, and they were looking to have it scattered throughout the parking. We felt it was better to try to concentrate that green space, that open space, so we could have our gazebo, our shuffleboard, park benches, and all that sort of stuff like that, to have a true meaningful play area for people, for these buildings that are, have parking lots around them. So rather than trying to scatter the trees throughout the parking lot, again, we concentrated it in this kind of open-space play area. With the concern from the tree wardens, et cetera, they were also concerned with how far apart the spacing was for the street trees along Dallas Avenue for the single-family residents. I had explained that we had some restrictions in terms of, we've got driveways, we've got water lines, we've got sewer lines, we've got all sorts of things coming from the roadway to the house, straight through. And I cannot plant on top of a utility, I can't plant on a driveway, and I should have it set off from those utilities to a certain extent as well. So we did look at it again, we increased the number of street trees. I believe it was nine previously, now we're at 22. So we have significantly increased the number of street trees for those single-family residences along Dallas Avenue. And within the parking lot, we added, I believe it was six additional islands with trees in there. So we went from 22 trees in the parking area to 28 trees, while still maintaining the open space that we thought was so important. So this was to address the concerns from the tree warden, et cetera. We definitely exceeded at about 40% the amount of landscape within the parking area. So we greatly exceed the 15, but we did want to try to accommodate the concerns of the, the tree people.
Okay, so this isn't perfect compliance with the street tree ordinance, but is, do I understand correctly, it's as close as you can get in order to maintain the, the project design? Because it's not practicable to plant trees on top of sewer lines and driveway openings and so forth. So a slight waiver is still required from the street tree ordinance, correct?
Right, so the, the trees for the postfire are shown at 50 feet on center. Which I believe is the minimum that the, the town was looking for. Went anywhere from 50 to 75. And again, we put them as close as we possibly could without putting them on top of the utilities.
Still try, you still maintain that distance on, on set, right?
I believe probably the standard is also to plant two trees per new single-family lot. So the lot on the far east, on the corner of Denver and Kinnicott, only has one tree?
That's true, but part of the problem in that particular instance is there is a concern with site distance. And the regulations also indicate that they don't want something planted, I believe, within a certain triangle at an intersection, and that's why there isn't a tree at the intersection.
Okay, and then on the southwest corner, there's also only one tree for the lot on the corner of Denver and the proposed public way.
And there are more, there's more to the speech.
I know, ma'am, you can't speak.
No.
One here and one here.
Alyssa, can you scroll down?
Oh, here? There's one here and one here.
Yep, great, so
And this one right here.
That one is
That's mostly because of that, the utilities are in that location.
And you couldn't put one in the back of the lot on the frontage on Denver?
That.
It's on the corner of Denver, yeah. And then you would fulfill the requirement at least for one of the lots.
That's a possibility.
Yeah, okay.
Would there be any objection adding that, that tree there?
No. The, the basin is behind that particular lot, so I don't have the grading shown on this particular one, but
Right.
Right. And you, you withdraw the um, fifty percent lot coverage to be impervious waiver, was that withdrawn? Are you still seeking that waiver?
Fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent.
Yes, I'll, we'll address that second.
So that's not withdrawn, that waiver, or that's not a?
No, that waiver is still in plan.
Wasn't that addressed or I mean, Shaw that the develops, the SHAB, that developer agreed to withdraw the lot coverage waiver request?
We requested the uh, fifty waiver for that as part of this submission.
Okay, but you didn't, as part of the SHAB, say you withdraw that waiver?
We withdrew it at the master plan stage, we submitted it as part of this stage.
Okay.
So, many, many months ago.
Yeah, yeah, we'll address, I mean, there's, you have a lot of waivers which seem to be.
And, and uh, Mr. Principi testified on that waiver at the J O B.
Yeah, I mean, how many hours have we pretended on, so forgive me if I forgot.
I don't expect you to. Unless there are any questions, I don't have any further of this, uh, back. I'd like to call Tom Principi, please.
Just a couple, and Mr. Principi, you, you are, uh, realize you're still under oath, correct? Having previously been sworn, I just have a couple of questions for you. Uh, one of them involves the sewer, uh, the issue of the sewer, you testified at some length about this choke point. That existed uh, early in the master plan proceedings where one size sewer main was transitioning into a smaller size and there was some concern about what the result of that was on the available capacity of the line, correct?
Correct.
And I'm not gonna ask you to go back into that, you testified how that issue all sorted itself out after some testing. But I, I would like to mention something else that had been in a TRC um, meeting of document from Woodard and Curran about a low point in the sewer line somewhere near the property. Uh, and in some proximity to the Patterson Avenue Station, there was some type of mention at the same time the choke point was mentioned. Of that issue, correct?
Yes.
Do you recall that coming up at the uh, at the master plan stage in your dealings with Woodard and Curran?
Uh, at that time, yeah, there was just a, it was more of a constructability item that they wanted to take up on the construction side of things.
Okay, could you explain that a little, a little more, what the, is that a problem, by the way, that, that locally?
No, not at all.
And why, why is it not a problem?
Well, just to put it in layman's terms, it's just the depth of the sewer on the Denver Ave is, is fairly deep, I think we touched base on that last time. So as far as all the tying points for the houses on Denver Ave, we're gonna have one tying point rather than tying all the sewer laterals. I believe it's, don't quote me, fifteen plus feet deep, it's a pretty deep sewer vein. So rather than having all that excavation done and ripping up the street on very large excavations, we're gonna have one tying point to a drop sewer manual. And it's been done many times before, so they were just alerting us that the sewer line was fairly deep on Denver, on our tying point.
That constructability issue was already worked into the approved uh, uh, preliminary plans, correct?
Yeah, the board has those plans, yep, it's been worked into it, yep.
And there's nothing unusual about constructing a sewer line in that, in that fashion.
Not at all.
And that, that issue was never made part of the, an issue that was raised as part of the master plan decision, correct?
Correct.
And no, no waiver or variance is required to construct that, that connection.
No, no.
Uh, second question, Bristol County Water Authority, there was some uh, mention at some point in these proceedings about uh, a required separation distance from the water line uh, to the uh, drainage structures that would be constructed within uh, Dallas, Dallas uh, Avenue and, and possibly Denver Avenue as well, I'm not sure, but uh, is there anything in the BCWA uh, manual that, that you're aware of? Or any constraint you're aware of to constructing the, the drainage uh, devices in the proximity shown to the uh, water line uh, on the plans?
No.
That's never been an issue in all, all the years you've been dealing.
Correct.
Uh, BCWA, uh, when an issue like that is encountered, uh, are there ways to sleeve one of the lines? Even where that regulation exists, unlike here, are there ways, again, constructability methods, construction practices to uh, achieve the desired effect uh, through some type of sleeving of, of one of the lines?
Yeah, we'll typically work with the agency on that item, if it is a, uh, an issue, we'd work with them to, to mitigate that.
Correct, and that's done at the construction.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
There was a, a lady from the Friedrich family who had some concerns about de-watering in connection with the construction process she has, her family has in adjacent farm and we're, we're concerned of whether that de-watering process is likely to have environmental impacts uh, on the farm and perhaps their, their wells. Is that, could you address that issue, please?
Yeah, I think we touched base a little bit about that last month and it was, a lot of it was part of that Ripley's permit. That is a pretty substantial document that kind of goes over the constructability and the construction phases of the project. Um, but again, just being on top of that ridge, we're not anticipating heavy de-watering, again, the drainage basin's on a lower level. There's no de-watering to construct those, we're actually designing around the high water table, the whole site was tested. And um, the water table was determined on the entire site, so there's obviously ledge at the summit side at that high point, we all understand there's ledge there. But then it actually drops off and on the east and west sides, it actually becomes an outwash plain, so there's ice contact, glacial sand. It's actually really nice porous material on east and west sides of that ridge. And then the water table drops down, obviously there's wetlands in the back, but we've uh, already established that groundwater table elevation and designed around it.
Okay, and, and DEM approved the project with that design and all, all of the related drainage calculations to ensure no adverse impact on surrounding properties.
Correct, yes.
And last thing, uh, there was a note uh, somewhere in the process, it may have been the planner's report uh, about bicycle rack locations uh, should be identified and, and an area for snow removal. Do I understand correctly that the bike rack locations are indeed on the plan? Uh, and that snow removal locations can be identified at the, of, at the final plan stage of review?
Correct.
Is there anything unusual about that?
No, not at all.
And are any, any concerns on your part about identification of snow removal locations?
No, again, just, just so the board understands, if it becomes an issue, um, what we've done in the past on past projects is they'd have to remove the snow. So if there's not a spot for snow removal and we can't make that work, the snow gets removed.
I think that's all I have for Mr. Principi, sure, thank you. Uh, and again, very quickly, I'd like to call Mr. uh, Bisco. Bisco, you've also been sworn, have you not?
Yes.
Okay, and could you tell us uh, about your business and the extent to which you get involved in uh, in the actual construction of, of utility lines?
We're general contractors in uh, heavy civil construction throughout New England.
And as part of that, as part of that job, are you, are you installing and working with local authorities and water companies to, to install sewer and water lines?
Yes, on a daily basis.
And that includes uh, cities and towns uh, in the proximity of Warren that, that may deal with Bristol County Water Authority?
Including Bristol County.
Have you e- ever experienced any issue with uh, distances uh, having to be observed between drainage structures and water lines as opposed to water lines and being separated from sewer lines?
No, typically there's nothing with, uh, no separation with drainage and water, just sewer and water.
And that's been your experience with uh, Bristol County Water Authority?
Correct, and they, available regulations state that.
The regulations actually provide that?
Provides the separation for sewer, not drainage.
Okay, and, and you've gotten multiple will serve letters uh, from Bristol County Water Authority? Beginning with a determination by par engineering, proceeding through various pump tests and repump tests as recently as last spring. And additional will serve letters through June of this year, correct?
Correct.
Uh, there was also some co- uh, constructability issue raised about having sufficient laid down area for construction materials for the single family homes and presumably the uh, apartments. Uh, as a contractor who's built many uh, small and large projects, are you concerned about the lay down sequences for the construction that's proposed here?
No, it's come down to logistics and project sequencing.
And you don't expect a problem, you lay down in one place while you're building a house in the other, right? Uh, and the snow removal, would you have the same answer that Mr. uh, Principi just provided on that issue?
Yes.
Believe that's all I have of Mr. Bisco, thank you. And I have one more, again, very, I'm sure fire chief is here or not, but I have.
Yes.
Okay, oh, thank you, Chief. Well, may I ask the fire chief just a couple of questions first before I call my, my final witness, thank you, Chief for coming, I know you had a conflict tonight.
Uh, I just wanna ask you a cou- a couple of questions about the letter that you wrote on September twenty fifth, the planning board, after the last uh, planning board meeting about uh, National Fire Protection Association standards, you're, you're familiar with those standards?
Yes.
Yes, and, and we had some issues that we dealt with uh, your uh, office and our engineers. When it came to the water uh, pressures and trying to make sure that the project meets NFPA standards for water pressure and we worked through those issues together, correct?
Yes.
Now, this letter uh, suggests that, and I'm quoting, the National Fire Protection Association NFPA standards require that fire apparatus be equipped with ladders capable of reaching a three story window height of approximately twenty three feet, correct?
Correct.
And that's what the standards provide as to how high your apparatus has to, has to be when, if you have a ladder truck, correct?
No, that's the requirements on a, a ground ladder carried on fire engines themselves, okay?
Apparatus on, uh, ladder apparatus on, on the trucks themselves, we're saying, okay, I understand that. Uh, and so that's a requirement for your trucks, correct?
Yes.
Now, there's no NFPA standard requirement that requires a, a city or town to have a ladder truck that reaches a, a height uh, greater than three stories, correct?
Not a requirement, no.
And so there, there's nothing about the project design that uh, violates any uh, NFPA standard that you're aware of, correct?
Well, not NFPA standard, but town standards of thirty five feet, feet written with public safety in mind.
You, you're talking about the thirty five foot height waiver that was granted at the master plan stage?
That's correct.
Uh, now, a, when it comes to the shift between three story buildings, well, let me withdraw that, not every city or town has a ladder truck uh, capable of reaching a fourth story, correct?
Correct.
In fact, it's not unusual for cities and, and towns to have ladder trucks, trucks that don't reach beyond a three story window, correct?
I don't know if that's unusual or not.
But there's several buildings in Warren that have uh, four, four stories or five stories, correct?
There are some.
Including some built fairly recently, correct, the uh, you are aware that there are some, right?
Yes.
Now, when it comes to that transition, that a question becomes, well, what do you do about four story buildings which are not unusual? And the NFPA provides standards for what is required of a uh, an owner or contractor that's contemplating a building that's more than three stories in height, right?
Repeat that, please?
The NFPA standards do have special requirements
Oh, yes.
for buildings that are beyond the reach of uh, of some ladder trucks, correct?
Correct.
And those, they, they require different types of, of fire ratings for buildings that are four feet tall or beyond, correct?
Four stories, yes.
Because you can't have a ladder truck that reaches the top of every building, obviously, correct?
Correct.
So, and you're not suggesting that there's anything about the design of this building uh, that, that would not be able to meet NFPA standards for buildings uh, that are greater than three stories uh, and, and that would achieve the, the required uh, protections that apply to buildings that are greater than three stories.
As you stated, it does meet the requirements for those heights.
Okay, and this came in September, I know that you've been looking at this project since uh, twenty twenty. And that you submitted, uh, you had emailed traffic with Principi Engineering while back and agreed to the access plan uh, and the turning radii and so forth, and you, we worked together with the uh, construction type of the building to, to ensure adequate uh, water pressures. This September twenty five, less than a month ago, is the, the first time you mentioned this, this, this issue of the, the length of the ladder truck, right?
Yeah, well, as you've mentioned, we do have other buildings in town of that similar height. And, and most of them, of the several you mentioned, is one building that the ladder truck can reach the whole structure from one position.
Yeah.
And the other two that I'm sure you're referencing are bigger and have four stories, they also give us more room to move around with this ladder truck to access more than one area. So as the uh, you know, the, this process continues, noting how tight this plan is. I realize I'm not gonna be able to move this ladder truck around freely. Yes, you did meet the turning radiuses uh, for a ladder truck to get in. But you know, as you mentioned, uh, years go by, this has been going on, incidents at these other buildings made me realize the, the um, concerns that I have for that height of a building from uh, incidents that have happened in those other structures.
Okay, but there's no requirement that a building.
Yeah, you ready to answer that?
Pardon me?
You answered the question.
I haven't asked the question yet, that you've, you've determined, uh, he's already answered. Okay, I'll ask, I'll ask him that question. Uh, there's no requirement uh, in the NFPA code that a building be accessible from all sides, correct?
Uh, I'd have to, I'm not gonna reference the code from hot, I'd have to look at the uh, reference, but you, there are certain distances that have to be met from each entrance, yes.
Right, and this, this building, these buildings are not gonna be built unless they meet the NFPA standards, correct? Agree on that, all right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I just have one other witness and just a couple of questions. And that's uh, Eric Immunen from uh, Anino Architects. Eric, uh, you've been previously sworn, have you not?
I have been, yes.
And you're, you're still under oath, uh, and I got a couple of questions to ask you, one, one has to do uh, with the architectural design.
Excuse me, sir, can you restate the name for the secretary?
Yeah, could you just spell?
Eric Immunen, I M M O N E N.
The building design, the architectural elevations that were provided, are those final construction drawings?
No, they are not.
And that was a, that was a basically a concept elevation for the uh, apartment building, correct? Uh, there was some uh, concern that the waiver uh, that had been granted for the building uh, density and height at the master plan stage uh, could result in a building that's too, too flat. Uh, do you agree with that proposition?
At that time, yes, but typically that's not how we like to design buildings.
Okay, but, but are there architectural techniques that you could take at the uh, with, at the final plan stage of review? To introduce some uh, reliefs or, or architectural uh, details to break up the mass of that building? Uh, and make it, make it more attractive than a, a simple flat plane?
Absolutely.
And is that something that in all likelihood would have occurred as a matter of course, even if I wasn't asking you these questions?
Yes, yeah, we would present those anyway.
That was a, that was a placeholder, it's not intended to, to provide the final construction details. Now let's, I just wanna ask you quickly.
Now, let's, I just want to ask you quickly about the the fire. Fire code issue we've just described, your company, Anino Architects, provided a response. To the Fire Chief's letter dated September twenty five, twenty twenty five. On the NFPA code requirements for this particular bill.
Correct, yes.
And is your firm regularly involved in architectural activity for significant buildings of this sort? And charged with responsibility for producing a design that complies in all respects with NFPA requirements?
Yes, we are.
And is there any NFPA requirement that any city in town that you're aware of? Have a ladder truck that somehow reaches beyond the third story of a building?
No, I'm not.
That's, there's nothing in the NFPA about that, is there anything in the NFPA that requires access? To buildings of of three stories or more from multiple vantage points?
As the chief mentioned, there are some clearances that are required around buildings to gain them access.
But but not not prohibitions?
No.
And is it your expectation? That any waivers or variances would be required or even desired? With respect to any aspect of the design of these apartment buildings? Uh, that anything that would that would break from NFPA requirements?
No.
That's not something your firm is interested in doing or has it?
No.
Correct?
We do not look for waivers on building code or NFPA code.
And that's not in the cards for this development?
Not for this one either.
Uh, and you're you're aware that there are multiple buildings in in town, including apartment buildings that are. Uh, well in excess of three stories, correct?
Yes, I am.
You, you just give a couple of examples.
Um, I don't have the address, but I think there's a five story building in town and a three story with a. Sort of loft four story area in it.
That's the Tuist at the. The mill.
Yeah, mill building, yeah, has the the three stories with the fourth story loft area.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you. I have no other witnesses, Mr. Chair. Or questions of other witnesses at this time.
After Mr. Ryan speaks, you can have some time for rebuttal if there's something.
Okay.
I think Mr. Chairman, given the way you work this out.
You need to come up so that.
Yes, Paul Ryan, for the citizens for responsible development of Warren. I think the way this is played out and the way. The applicant wanted to do it. I'm going to give a, what will be like a final argument. And then he wanted to give his final argument thereafter, so. It's probably better to have the public. Speak now, then I'll do my final argument and then. Mr. Landry, I mean, that was the way it worked out last month, so.
All right.
Thank you.
So do any members of the public wish to speak to the traffic matter only? Oh, I thought we were already open, because this was a continuance? Yeah.
Donna Raza, I live at seventeen Denver Avenue. And I want to speak to two things that were not mentioned. Right in front of my house, there is going to be a street coming out onto Denver Avenue. At no point did anyone look at the traffic that's going to come out onto Denver Avenue and go up Detroit Avenue. The traffic studies only looked at part of Denver at the end and Kennicott and Buffalo. Um, there are tons and tons of children on Detroit Avenue and Kennicott. And um, no one mentioned that street that's going to be coming out right onto Denver where the houses are. It's in the plans. Um, and then I also had sent a letter a few months back about um. The fact, and I want to address what was just said about the grass that you could walk on. I was walking my granddaughter in a stroller, you can't push a stroller on grass very easily. And I got ran off the road, car came around next to um, at the bottom of Kennicott coming off a schoolhouse. And I literally had to run against the fence near Ferris's to not get run over with my granddaughter. And the woman turned around and came back and apologized. Because she said, these roads are so windy, they come up so quick, I didn't see where I needed to turn and. I'm so sorry, I just want you to know, I wasn't texting. But it's already very dangerous on that road. And with two hundred more cars, it's going to get more dangerous. Um, and walking on a grass area while it might sound like it's easy. When you're pushing a carriage or you're riding a bike or you have children, it's not easy, it's dangerous. And I don't think this traffic study was um, was done well. So that's.
We did receive your letter, by the way, and that that is part of the record. Particularly about, you know, that the car coming around and the issue with the grass. Thank you.
George Villa, one sixty seven Schoolhouse Road. Um, I had brought up traffic before, I haven't seen the traffic study, I know that they put up new sensors to study the traffic. However, I didn't see any placed on Kennicott and Schoolhouse, I saw them. Further down on Denver and the other street, I never saw anything down there. So, my question is, children are going to be using that street to go to school, I think that's well known. Can a child, can you have a pedestrian in a car pass the pedestrian without going over the double yellow line? I don't think so. So you have traffic that either has to stop and there's a blind spot. Uh, when you crest over next to the farm, Ferris Farm, uh, where there's a rock there, you crest over. It's kind of a blind spot, you can't see the incoming traffic right there. Uh, I just think that the traffic's study, it'd be great to show one up on the computer, actually see. Uh, a computer model of what the traffic would look like with pedestrians or with a stroller, children on bicycles. Uh, people walking their dogs, uh, there just isn't enough room for all the traffic that's going to be coming out of that. The other thing, the traffic study, again, I don't have access to it, but it'd be interesting to see the other points that I mentioned about. There's a speed limit that goes down to fifteen miles per hour. So, did they take that into consideration for the traffic study? Because that's a bottleneck right there, as it is, you can't go over that bridge. Uh, with two arch trucks, one has to wait for the other one, it's it's a mess over there. And you're introducing all this additional traffic to that specific area. Never mind that we know traffic is not going to go up to Charles Street. Uh, during rush hour, they're going to be coming out to Schoolhouse, so everything's going to be coming down there. As it is, you have the traffic coming from Long Lane and all the traffic trying to bypass the school, going down Long Lane. To Schoolhouse Road, again, big bottleneck, the traffic there is already heavy enough. Introducing all this additional traffic is is it's going to be a nightmare. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, we did receive a letter about this. In particular, Serpentine and the bridge and the width of the road. So this is part, that is part of the record and part of our deliberations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Ryan? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close a public hearing.
Second, Tyler. All in favor? As opposed, okay.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for all the time you've put into this. And I apologize that we got documents to you late, one of which you'll be referring to.
Thank you.
How's that? Let's see, I will lean into it. Um, under Rhode Island General Law is forty five fifty three, four E, little three. The planning board must make finding positive finds a fact in order to approve a project. And among those findings. Local concerns that have been affected by the relief granted. Do not outweigh the state and local needs for low and moderate income housing. Low, local concerns that have been affected by the relief granted. Do not outweigh the state and local needs of low and moderate income housing. Now, the Westerly case I referenced last month. Was denied by the Westerly Planning Board and then the denial was upheld by the same judge that had this case. You've just heard the Fire Chief discuss the height issue. And in addition to the height issue, you've had a myriad of issues. That you now have in a notebook that. I must say is the most thorough notebook I've ever seen in a, one of these cases in fifty years, especially prepared by. Uh, neighborhood group. The height of the building, in addition to the safety issue. Of the two buildings is completely out of scale with that part of Warren. And for that reason. And the health and safety concerns of just the force, you know, the two four story buildings. I suggest the board cannot make that positive find the fact. Regate regarding approving the project. Now we'll get on to reasons you can deny a project. Under the forty five fifty three four F, Romanum five. It says concerns for the environment and the health and safety of current residents have not been adequately addressed. Now, there's three things that haven't been adequately addressed. The water pressure issue on the sprinklers, I don't think has ever been resolved. And one of the ways you can. One of the ways you can ameliorate the ability to fight a fourth story. Is with significant water pressure in the sprinklers in the fourth story. If they're a question mark, you might have a problem. We then went on to the National Fire Standards in the Chief's letter of last month. And the question becomes. What are new construction? And two four story buildings, which create a problem in terms of access for the fire department. Just because one or, just because a town is required. Is not required to have a four story ability on the ladder truck. Doesn't mean if you're going to build these kind of structures, you're not going to need one. And and so that concern is really not addressed at all. The traffic issue I've suggested all along was an insufficient study. And unfortunately, it really hasn't been thoroughly addressed now, so. The traffic finding, I'm not sure you can find it's not going to have a negative impact. On the property, on the town and on this development. The lack of Ripta. One of the things generally for affordable housing is that public transportation. And you'll see in California and the Palisades, they're actually building bus stations and extending bus routes. Ripta is actually reducing the service to Warren, which is then going to force the people in this project. To use more automobiles, because they don't have a public transportation easily available. Last month, I went into the nineteen ninety two comprehensive plan. Which is the one that is in play in this particular application. And. This area, as I mentioned, is profile area four for the town. And there's a myriad of conclusions that both the comprehensive plan and the planner. Indicated this project fails to meet. It is in lot, not in keeping with the scale, obviously, of all the homes and so forth around the area. Especially the farms and the open areas. The planner went through every single issue. That relates to that ninety two comprehensive plan. I don't think any of the issues that she went through. This application actually meant any one of them. The contrast between open land and a and a big project like this. The visual characters of the fields, farms, et cetera, and open space. Preserve the town's character, preserve the scale of the town. This project is more in keeping with New York City than it is the eastern part of Warren going towards Tuist. The compatibility with contiguous uses is that. They're all residential, but they're not compatible because of the intensity of this development. And. The development is such, it's what I used to say, it's a. A bag of ten pounds something, but the bag's only five pounds. It's a highly intense development. Which is going to create. All kinds of adverse impacts, many of which are in the. Uh, extensive document that's been presented by my clients. And. You're going to have to look at my first two points. In order to deny an application, you have to make the findings I suggested. But what often is overlooked is in order to approve an application. You have to make positive findings, which in this case you cannot make. So with that, I suggest that the board, at the very least. Uh, deny the fourth story element of the two. Uh, fifty four unit structures. And at the very least, adhere to every single. One of the trees required, the islands required. Because this is such an intense impact on that area, you need every tree. Possible to break up that development. And again. It's, time has eroded, the some of the elements, the dam's gone. But on the other side. Ripta is pulling back its resources and roots. To where this project eventually, and maybe not in the too far distant future, is going to be all automobile traffic. And for all those reasons, I request respectfully that you deny this application. Uh, and not make the finds of fact required for it to go forward, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'll start by saying that a lot of the positions that have been taken, a lot of the arguments that have come forward at this preliminary plan stage of review are out of order in, in almost everything that Mr. Ryan said because they ignore one very important thing. This project has not been submitted to the town for the first time at the preliminary plan stage. The preliminary plan stage is the second of three approval stages for a project like this. This project has already been approved and vested at the master plan stage by both the State Housing Appeals Board on a nine to nothing decision and by the Superior Court in a very emphatic decision. There is a master plan approval that is vested as to the major planning elements of this project, the general ones and the specific ones. That's what vesting means. There's a height variance for the proposed height of these buildings that was granted at the master plan stage. There was a density, not a, not a variance, a modification, not called a variance under the Comp Plan Act, but it's a modification, modification of the required height, the statutory ordinance, height limit, and the density limitations in this neighborhood. They were approved and they're vested, and it's not the role of the preliminary plan stage to revisit the, the master plan approval for the project that's been vested. If there's a showstopper health, safety, and welfare issue that didn't exist at the master plan stage of review, that's something that is taken into consideration at the preliminary plan stage, but it's not an opportunity to challenge the decision that was made by the decision-making authority at the master plan level. There's reference to a nineteen ninety-one Comp Plan that has no bearing on this project. The twenty twenty-four Comp Plan has no bearing on this project. As the planning report indicated, and as Mr. Ryan's memorandum indicated, this project is vested based on the law that was in effect when the project was first submitted in twenty twenty at the master plan stage. There was no comprehensive plan in effect at that time. The controlling law was the law that went into effect in two thousand four that defined what a comprehensive permit is all about and how that comprehensive permit and, and a town's affordable housing plan has to relate to its comprehensive plan. That all came into effect for, for-profit developers at least in two thousand four. That's the controlling law that the project became vested on upon the, the master plan approval. And part of that vesting in that decision recognized that Warren was one of, one or two other, only one of maybe three municipalities in the whole state that had never gotten a state-approved affordable housing plan. And that didn't even have a valid active approved comprehensive plan. So this project was reviewed differently from the outset and has to be reviewed again now from the lens of where things stood when the project was being submitted. No Comp Plan to fall back on, no state-approved affordable housing plan. What the town did have back at the master plan stage and that both the SHAB and State Housing Appeals Board and the court found to be relevant was a Warren Town Council-approved local affordable housing plan, something that the cities and towns were required to enact when the nineteen, when the two thousand four laws changed completely the whole regulatory picture relating to affordable housing. And that affordable housing plan was a very well-thought-out analysis of the town of Warren, recognized very clearly that there were environmental constraints and vacant land constraints, availability of vacant land constraints to the development of higher-density residential housing. There were a few parcels that were on water and sewer that had the capacity to increase Warren's affordable housing supply and its general need for more housing. And so the town's own plan and the one that both the State Housing Appeals Board and the court found pertinent, identified this site, this exact site as a suitable candidate for high-density residential housing that includes lower, moderate-income housing. And they did it for all the reasons one might expect, and I've mentioned them all, the lack of a lot of other options or any other options, and the availability of, of appropriate infrastructure. And that dynamic continues to be relevant to today. It, it would be different for a new project that, that could file tomorrow or last week or last month. But any other regulatory regimen is not applicable and continues to be not applicable to this project. Now, at the master plan level, the court and the State Housing Appeals Board identified three issues that could have been the difference between a master plan approval and no master plan approval that involved potential health and safety issues. One was the sewer issue. And one was the water issue in terms of water pressure for the buildings. And the third one that was referenced was, was traffic. And the board found that there were insufficient indications on all of those issues to have those issues be showstoppers for this type of project. And none of that has changed as we've moved to the preliminary plan stage. In fact, some question marks that had existed at the master plan stage on those issues have become clarified since then. For example, at the master plan stage, the concern about sewer was this choke point somewhere along Medicom Avenue at which the sewer line transitioned from one size to a smaller size and could potentially have created a bottleneck. And that would require some work to reconcile the size of, of those connecting lines. I'll spare you the details, you've heard it before, it's detailed in the master plan decision, but there was extensive testing that was done by agreement of the applicant's engineers and the town's engineers to diagnose that, to test those, those pipes and to, under every type of weather event for many months through computer means.
Excuse me, Mr. Landry, we have heard this, we know this. I'd, I'd like you to shorten it up a bit because this is, I, we, we know this.
Okay.
You know, it's been going over and the, the opposition has done a good job in terms of summation.
Okay, I'll make it, I'll make it a little more compact. The sewer issue's off the table.
Until eight o'clock.
Pardon me?
Eight o'clock, I, I will give you until eight o'clock.
Okay, the sewer issue's off the table. The chair has indicated that, council has indicated that, there's no more sewer issue. There's no more water issue. The, there have been additional flow tests, additional reports by the engineers, by the architects about the available water pressures. You heard the fire chief tonight indicate there's no issue with the water pressure. There's no issue with the ladder trucks. There is no requirement to design a four-story building in a way that accommodates the local municipality and its ladder trucks. You don't have to have a ladder truck that goes to the top of the Empire State Building. You don't have a ladder truck that has to go to a fourth story. There are different ways to deal with that. The engineer's been clear tonight that there'll be no waivers in any respect with respect to any NFPA requirement. The traffic issue, I provided a memo, a legal memo, that the Rhode Island courts, I provided this to you several months ago. The Rhode Island courts have been unanimous over the years that traffic is an expert witness issue. It's not to be resolved by people saying there were too many cars or that this is going to happen or that that's going to happen and everybody's going to get hit by a car. That's never been found acceptable because it's not a reliable indicator of whether additional cars translate into either congestion or increased congestion or increased safety impacts. And, and I provided to you that law. There have been four traffic reports that have been provided. I'll get right to the point, four expert traffic reports taking the traffic counts in school and out of school. The, the increase in traffic results in there being the highest level of service that you could possibly have for, for additional traffic. Level A with all of this new, that's how much capacity the roadway has. Your, two experts have looked at the traffic issues, Woodard and Curran at the master plan stage after the first traffic reports were done, they said, "We have no issues with the increase or changes," they use that word, "changes in traffic." Fussin' O'Neill remarked that there don't appear to be any intersection issues. They, they remarked that Kinnickit is a low, relatively low traffic roadway. They did make a recommendation that we do an accident analysis through the police department to determine if there are any, any, any pattern, any pedestrian issues involving the traffic. That was all done, there was testimony that was provided as a result of that, there's no pattern, there's nothing there. There seems to be a problem with somebody in the school department who doesn't want to have kids picked up by a bus if they live within a certain distance of the school. Perhaps someone should talk to that person and get them to change their mind if there's a feeling that there's an issue with traffic. But if there is, it's not as a result of this development, it's an existing condition. The streets in that part of town have never had sidewalks leading to the school. If there's a need for that or a desire for that, because the, the, the schools won't pick up the, the kids, there are other ways to deal with that.
Um, please.
Are the other ways?
I'll skip the affordable housing statistics, it's still a mire, a very grave situation. Six, one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine households in Warren are cost-burdened, meaning they don't have enough money to pay for, for their housing. Twenty-two percent are owners, fifty, five hundred and thirty-three, I'm sorry, nine hundred and ninety-three are renters, six hundred and thirty-six are, are owners. And for purposes of this application, the town's still at three-point-eight-four percent of, of affordable housing, less than it was at the time this application was first filed. On the waivers, we provided testimony that for street trees and, and so forth, islands, we've done the best we can, there are practicality issues in, in having more street trees. The, the state of Rhode Island doesn't want urgent affordable housing, that's particularly housing that's part of a local affordable housing plan preference that gets denied because there aren't enough trees when somebody's made the, the effort to provide them. The waiver on the fifteen percent lot coverage is a, is a very simple matter. That was in place in, when the, when the reservoir was a drinking water reservoir, it's not any longer, there's salt water there now. We've got an RIDEM water quality permit to, to show there's no water quality issue whatsoever relating to the stormwater on this, on this project, there's no danger to the, to the reservoir. Climate change, I don't have to say much about that, it has nothing to do with this application. There, there's no five-hundred-year flood plane that's part of any regulatory structure that's applicable to this project. We got a letter from CRMC that said that they would respect the RIDEM approval for this project, that jurisdiction is not changed to the CRMC, that they don't expect that to happen anytime soon, and that if it does happen, we are grandfathered with the RIDEM approval. A project in Rhode Island is not required to comply with laws or regulations that have never been enacted and that may not be enacted for many years. There was an employee of DEM that disagreed with the director of the department and the staff that still works for DEM that, that granted the Ripti's permit and wetland permitting and, and the stormwater management approvals for this project, the distances to the drainage devices from the water table, all of that was done in close consultation with DEM and for good reason, according to the engineers that worked with DEM hand-in-hand to make sure that this project was properly designed with all, all of the DEM requirements in mind and best practices in mind. There are some additional issues I'll touch on short, I'll touch on very quickly, there was some concern that the town council may eventually, at the final plan stage, agree not to accept these roadways as public roads. That's their prerogative. But the way it works under the state law is that the final plan is a, is a approval of the public road, but the town doesn't have to accept the maintenance responsibility, drainage structures within the road or, or the road itself, maintenance of the road. And, and that's, that's a prerogative that the town council had. We've submitted in writing our position on that, that if the town council decides at the appropriate stage not to accept these roads, the homeowners and the owners of the buildings will accept responsibility for the roads, contrary to what the former employee of DEM said. There is a, an operations and maintenance manual that's associated with this project, fully approved as to what maintenance is required. We submitted as an exhibit six months ago, along with all of the drainage calculations, the homeowners will be responsible for that and a suitable agreement will, will go in place so the town doesn't have to maintain anything associated with the new road or the drainage if it doesn't want to. I covered tonight through some questions, the issues of snowplow areas and bike racks and so forth, those are final plan issues to the extent they haven't already been covered on the plans. Blasting, we'll follow all of the state requirements for blasting, pre-blast surveys. Ripta, public transportation, I'm not sure why anyone thinks or still thinks that worker housing for households earning eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of area meeting, that these people don't have vehicles. Everybody's got a vehicle, these are working people who'll have to have mortgages and, and pass credit, credit scores to live in these, they got houses like everybody else, they've got cars like everybody else. And the traffic studies took into account what those traffic volumes would be, and they resulted in A-grade results. We talked, I covered tonight the architectural improvements that are open for discussion, something to, to make the, the buildings more attractive. These are buildings, again, that already have been provided with a waiver for the height and, and scale, that's not, that's not a.
You're approaching ton, we did go over that in length, you're repeating information
I'm done.
Given tonight.
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. This has been an incredibly long process. And it has been, we've been given a tremendous amount of information from both sides. it has been, uh, we've been given a tremendous amount of information from both sides. The reason, the reasoning that Mr. Landry used, that uh in the master plan waivers were accepted and vested is not shared by the town solicitor's office. So the idea that we can't challenge uh heights of the building is in the opinion of our town solicitor, not true. Uh, this town has a character. It has a sense of place that is unique. It has a built environment in the waterfront that's historic. Um, it has a rural character that has farms, some of which have residential areas around them. But is a rural, are rural areas with small residential developments. And we have an area along Medicom Avenue that is well-suited for intense, dense development. And that was included in the market to Medicom study, which was an important part of our comprehensive plan. Um, which doesn't figure into this particular issue, but our past comprehensive plan in contravention to what Mr. Landry said, does count. And it talks about our sense of place and the importance of ensuring that we have this unique character in our town and that there are places for intense development. And there are places where intense development should not take place. This issue of this, this development is way beyond anything that surrounds it. And in fact, anything that surrounds any in uh residential area in this entire town. The idea that four-story buildings, you know, won't be seen because of the trees, they're there. This isn't, you know, it, this isn't uh the, the Wizard of Oz, pay no attention to that man behind the screen. We know what's there. We have heard it over the last five years. And it is way out of scale. And the density is absurd for this area. And because it's allowed, just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. And you should have a concern about a community like this. I know many people who come in and say, it is a beautiful place to drive into. It's a beautiful place to live in. This proposal will destroy a part of our town and will destroy the character and the sense of place that many people who live around it have. And it's a safety issue as well. There will be a traffic increase. The traffic studies did not take into consideration all of the streets that, that are, that will be used. Schoolhouse Road appears nowhere there. Serpentine appears nowhere there. I mean, this is the kind of selective reasoning that does not work in terms of an overview of this project. The, the traffic experts didn't do the kind of thinking that the public did. And I take exception to the fact that a, a traffic expert would be judged higher than someone who knows what it's like, and count me among them. I drive on Child Street. At two o'clock, it's filled. And it's going to be much worse. We've also have Penny Lane coming in, which is going to impact traffic there. The wait at the lights that cross Child Street to Medicom is three lights at around two o'clock. Interestingly enough, the traffic study, the, the high period that's noted in the traffic study is four to six. What happened to two o'clock, which is when I don't drive on Child Street? Um, this, this increase is significant, and it wasn't addressed in the traffic study. And it is part of what we have to consider. And the safety of our children and our adults and our pets is something to be considered as well. With the number of cars that would be coming out of here, according to Mr. Landry as well, hey, these people, even if they're in the affordable, are gonna have cars. And if that's the case, you've got two cars for every family. So you've got four hundred cars. But wait a minute. The state legislature has passed a bill that allows for a accessory dwelling units. So the twelve houses could actually be twenty-four by right. So we would, we now are talking about an increase, never been addressed in terms of the amount of traffic that could, that would impact this area as a result of this out-of-scale, out-of-proportion development. The existing buildings that we talked about that were as tall as these are nowhere, they're not in the rural area. They're in our built area. That's where those buildings are. To compare those is not apples to apples, it's apples to pineapples. We're not talking about the same things. And, and using that kind of logic, to me, represents an attempt to push through a project that unfortunately should have been stopped a long time ago. For reasons that we're not gonna go into now, the planning board was given bad advice in terms of our rejection of it the first time through. But we've gone through, we've done everything that we were asked to do. And I can tell you, this is one of the most frustrating processes I have ever involved, been involved in. The, 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 the anger, the, the confusion, the frustration that has been directed. It's been very difficult to sit here and listen to what goes on. But that's our job. We're the planning board. We put together a comprehensive plan that we, that I worked on for five years at least. And we finally came up with one that is good. And the ninety-two comprehensive plan was good for the time. And it spoke directly to the maintenance of the character of this town. We're not saying you can't build on this land. You can't, but be reasonable. You know, no, no legislation in that comprehensive permit anticipated some kind of insane uh intense development to the level that this is, is proposed. This is so far beyond what this land could accept in a regular world. And the comprehensive permit opened the door, as Mr. Landry said, you know, now it's a little bit different, but that, that opened the door. That was the state legislature that did that. A misguided sense of how we're going to get affordable housing. And I also take exception to the fact that we don't have affordable housing. Oh, yes, we do. We've approved Liberty Street. We approved Penny Lane. There is a movement, we've also gotten the acceptance of the fact that people who paid vouchers in this town are able to be counted as affordable housing. I mean, we're not at the bottom of the barrel here, and we don't have a lot of space. The, the mistakes of the state legislature in imposing a one-size-fits-all in the towns and cities is a shame. It's a damn shame that they would do something like that and not say, how do we look at the state as a whole and help people find affordable housing? And in the middle of this, we had COVID. And a bunch of people moving into town who might not have come, and prices have skyrocketed here. And that's a fact. I mean, you know, my house is worth a hell of a lot more than it used to be. I wish it wasn't. Because it's changed the name, the, 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 the character. It can, will continue to change the character of my neighborhood and this town as well. So, yes, we want affordable housing. Yes, we're working toward it. Yes, that's part of the comprehensive plan. That, that uh, the, the proposal that Mr. Landry brought up that was approved by the town council um unwisely uh that identified this area as a good place for affordable housing. I have no idea. I know the, the planner who was responsible for that, and the town council uh decided to go along with it. But it doesn't, it's not sensible. And this, finally, this, this ledge that we're talking about, that is gonna need to be blasted. There's no way of, of assuring that those wells that surround this area would not be impacted by it. I'm going through something similar to this, to this right now with a, a community well system and, and work being done on it. It's very complex. The amount of vibration that would be created by this dynamiting of, of ledge is going to be incredibly destructive and potentially a problem for people who live in the area. These are, these are some of the issues that I see. This is my opinion. I'm not speaking for the entire uh planning board. I'll let them speak for their, to their uh, how they, what they feel about this.
Mr. Chair, before we get started, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, we already did.
We did, we did that move?
Yeah.
All right, teco some of what you said. Um, you know, I came into this, I was in part of the original application. I moved to this town in twenty twenty-one. I looked at it from its vested point, and that's the way I observed this application and kind of went through my thought process. I agree, density, it's, in my opinion, unacceptable in this location, like what they're proposing, how. However, that's not worn enough to say no. The fire chief's comments, you'll hear me many times on this planning board, reference the importance of our professional and how I deter to their guidance. I take that into consideration. Not alone is it enough to, for me to do it to now, maybe not. Traffic, the lack of the developer or the applicant's ability to address the pedestrian concerns. Schoolhouse Road, the bridge, and Serpentine, even with the public and the board bringing those points up. Is that alone enough to deny? No, in my opinion. But now, as I look through this and I put them all together, I do come to the conclusion that there is a lack of the applicant addressing the safety concerns for this development. It's not about, does this look good? For taking all those subjective aspects of it, out of this, my interpretation, I believe the applicant failed to satisfy my concerns of safety when it comes to our professionals' comments. And most importantly, the tr- traffic, not only in this area, but the surrounding area and the impact it's gonna have. And then, you know, the lack of access to public transportation, although that's not influential in my decision here. You know, I, I think uh Mr. Landry is wrong. I think we do need to have public transportation, especially, you know, if someone is going into affordable housing, I don't think it's safe to assume they have access to cars and vehicles, right? We don't know what their conditions are. I mean, that's a big burden on all of us, whether it's gas or car payments. So you have to assume there's gonna be individuals that are gonna come in here and need access to public transportation. But I find that there's a lack of it, and there's a lack of mobility for pedestrians in this area to move around freely, let alone if there is an additional four hundred cars, if everyone has a car, as Mr. Landry represented. That's, you know, as we deliberate this and we talk about it, that's my thought process. And that's where I stand right now. And I've been processing this. I have invested countless hours into this. I've driven down Kinnicket over a hundred times. I have no reason to go down there. Prior to this, I never needed to. And I see the pedestrian traffic. I see the veh- vehicular traffic. And, you know, to open it up to us for deliberation, that's where my thought process is. And I'm, I'm very interested to hear how my fellow board members are processing this and places where I may be wrong or I may be missing. So, Mr. Chair.
Jenny?
I have a couple of questions for the solicitor. Um, Mr. Landry said that the nineteen ninety-two plan was not accepted by the state and therefore does not apply. Is that an accurate characterization?
I don't believe so. My, uh, whatever advice is that take the legal opinions of both attorneys, but the value that you deem as uh appropriate. Um, however, just focus on at this preliminary stage, extent it's applied, it's where you have to apply.
It, it, it seems to me, if the town accepted the comprehensive plan, the planning board accepted and recommended it to town council, it's the plan that was accepted at the time of the application. It was the, whether or not it's stating, it was the, what we were acting under. Um, both in terms of our zoning and everything else. So to, to say we didn't, that otherwise we're saying we don't have a comprehensive plan at all, in which case there's no standard.
Could it be that it was expired? Not that it had. I think that plan, there was a plan that was state-approved prior to the most recent one. Um, but it's just that comprehensive plans have an expiration date. So it might have, I think, maybe that
So, so if it's expired?
Expired, but it's still, it's still was in, it was still the local comprehensive plan that the town warrant could continue to utilize for review of applications. It's not that it no longer is, um, it's just states.
Okay. Um, yeah, al- also, um, I, I'm confused in both the SHAB decision and the state uh, uh, Superior Court decision on where it leaves us on these waivers and, and our obligation to accept them or not.
As the chair stated, that opinion is that they have not been properly addressed. It's certainly can address it tonight.
Um, there are a lot of local concerns here. Uh, and the, they deal specifically with requirements for approving um, a comprehensive permit. It has to conform to the local zoning, and it has to conform to the comprehensive plan. And if it doesn't, it has to address other issues. And in the case of this application, it doesn't conform to the comprehensive plan either. As Mr. Ryan pointed out, to the issues of this neighborhood being identified as rural. Um, and uh to be maintained as its rural character. Four-story or four-story buildings don't, aren't indicative of, of rural characters. The zoning ordinance, in effect at the time of the application, while it was, uh, there, there's a fifteen percent impervious cover limit um that this plan exceeds, while that impervious cover related to the fact that it was a reservoir that, the fact that it's no longer a reservoir seems irrelevant to me at this point because other standards are still being applied, like D E M approval. So if we are to continue to conform to D E M requirements rather than C R M C requirements, then the requirement that drinking water standards be followed, follows on as, as being appropriate. So those are my big thoughts on this. Um. Then there's minor issues around trees and landscape islands that we've continued to push back on, and they have not. It, it seems that it would be an easy fix to meet the landscape island requirements, and they haven't. Seems an easy fix. To put in as many trees as required, and they haven't. So that's where I am. Thank you.
I uh share the same sentiments as uh my, my colleagues, and um, I, I don't wanna belabor everything again, but um, I, I would it, it boils down to the density and scale of this project. I mean, when you are trying to find a comparable in height and you're having to use an old mill tower that has a, a chute sticking up in the middle of it as a comp for the entire town, then you know that your massive monolith residential construct is out of, out of character. Um, and obviously, as the chairman reiterated, uh, when you know that it's there and you drive down um Kinnicket, you're gonna, you'll have it in your mind. You'll always know it's there. And just because you'll only see it through trees, you know, not every single, momentarily it'll be behind a building. If you're too close to that, that house, doesn't mean that you're not gonna just feel the presence of it all the time. But I, I also think that uh, um, some of the, the assumptions, like with the, the traffic studies, they, they don't reflect some of the, the realities of how people live in, in Warren. I mean, if you look at in the morning or midday with school buses, when they stop there, you know, there's if you drive down Detroit now, there's cars parked on either side of the road. It's not there's cars parked on either side of the road. It's not, I mean, it's technically, you know, two lanes, but it's, you're weaving like this and, and, you know, sharing space with other cars, you know, and then on, when parents are coming to pick up kids, they're parked along those roads waiting for the bus that's going to stop and, and kids that are walking from across the street. And, and with, uh, Kickamewett also having the, um, that one road is now going to be closed. So all the traffic is going to be coming out of the main stop sign. You're going to have twice during the day, especially on days where it's raining, you're going to have just kids everywhere, cars parked everywhere. It's going to be chaotic to have potentially 200 cars, you know, additional cars, you know, just a block or two off, you know, if they're all, um, if every person in that place has a drive. So I think that there's significant concerns with, with the, uh, public safety, with the traffic, but also with the fire safety. I, I understand that there might be some technical guidelines that, that are reflective of a three-story building more so than a four-story building and, but I would take the, you know, the, the obvious, uh, observations of our fire chief on a specific development as a, a valid concern. And I wouldn't want to jeopardize the welfare of a community because you technically don't have to have easy access to the backside of the building. And I would rather make sure that we design something to where you can readily approach all sides of it, if that is what the fire chief deems necessary. And it seems reasonable, you know, that it would be considering that that's arguably the only building in town that would, it would have its own plan as to approach it. So we would want to make sure to do that. Um, and, uh, as far as the, you know, the some of the, the, whether we use the comprehensive plan that was in the past or the present, what, what is, is clear is that even at the time that this application was first put in, the town was actively aware of housing, was actively working towards, um, addressing housing and had housing addressed in, in forms that were not necessarily meeting the, the statute, whether it's a deed restricted, but they, we were providing housing in, in a competent manner. But we were also working intently on a comprehensive plan that we now have. So it wasn't like we were not actively addressing it. We were in fact responsibly addressing it for literally a decade or more. So it, it was known well in advance of this application, what the intentions of the town were, what the intentions were dictated in the ordinances. So it's not, you know, while, while there might be some uh, technicality that can be argued on behalf of the applicants, I don't think it is reasonable to say that it reflects the entrance of the interest of the town or the, uh, town councils and the town experts' uh, goals and intentions and how they would address meeting this need for the town. So I, I, I I feel that we, you know, one of the standards that says that, you know, if we are, um, working towards that objective at the time, and I think we've been working at that objective, you know, long in advance, that some of the fruit of that, the, the, the chair mentioned was, is the voucher program, Liberty, Penny Lane, and the now present, uh, comprehensive plan, which has, uh, a clear method of having affordable housing opportunities in an area that also has ripped, uh, traffic on Medicom. So I think that we were prudently addressed it that way. But those are some of my thoughts and would be.
Questions? Tim?
Um, besides echoing the, the same things that my colleagues have said, which are all excellent points, um, the example of the ladder truck, they still built the Empire State Building, even the ladder truck can't reach the top of it. Um, that comment tells me that either they have absolutely no concept of how fire ground operations do work or can work. Um, or they completely misunderstood the intent of, um, the chief's letter, or we're being intentionally misled. It's got to be one of the three. Um, the fact that it might be able to reach one portion of the top of that roof doesn't mean that that provides full coverage for that whole building in all circumstances. And, um, I don't know how many of the public here have ever climbed a ladder to even the top of a second story building, let alone a third. Um, fourth is just inconceivable. It's not going to happen. Um, that's just not the point. It's not about a ladder truck reaching the top of the Empire State Building. That's not what the letter said. That's not what I got from it. And I believe it's misleading, um, in its, you know, in the context of that comment. It's just not what that letter was meant to express. And I think we're intentionally trying to skirt the actual meaning of the letter, that it should be taken into consideration how these things work. Um, and no one's ever asked him exactly what he meant by that, but, um, I just find it to be disingenuous at best. So I would echo my, my colleague's, uh, concerns and, um, I would throw that out there as well.
Thank you, Kim. Jerry?
My thoughts on this is, uh, yeah, it all rolls back to the affordable housing situation here. And you've got to weigh, you know, affordable housing versus a, a project that doesn't meet the character of our town. You know, is there enough affordable housing in this project to make this even a, you, you know, palatable project or not? And, and, you know, Penny Lane was 100% affordable. This one is not. This one is, you know, compared to the number of units in this, this project, they're on the lower side of affordable as to, you know, just enough to get through the comprehensive, um, permit process. And, you know, there's a lot of downsides of this project. The, the scale of it is, is huge compared to where it's going to be. You know, the, uh, some of the comments that I heard were, well, the town can put in a sidewalk for the kids. Well, the town's going to have to pay for that, you know, if that gets done. Which means, you know, to do that, you're talking about what? The eminent domain of, of yards to put a sidewalk through? And all of a sudden, in, in this area, a sidewalk is an urban, not a rural part of our community. So we're taking this beautiful rural area that, you know, is, is meets, you know, that meets the character of that side of town and turning it into another water street? You, you know, I mean, with, with the traffic problems that are already downtown, we're going to take those kinds of traffic problems. You know, never mind the fire, never mind, you know, the other issues that we're talking about. So, you know, I agree with the, uh, other members of the board, very concerned about the safety of these children coming back and forth to school. And my understanding is that the school buses are running just exactly like school buses are required to run in Rhode Island. They're complying with the law as far as what the schools are required to do with buses. Which means that the town would have to deal with these children, getting them safely back and forth to school. If this project were to go forward with the traffic issues involved. So that's where I stand on it.
Thank you, Jerry. Rick?
Town needs affordable housing, I agree there. And that's where, uh, my agreement ends. The entire character of that neighborhood is all single-family housing. And to put up a multi-story apartment building is way out of character for the neighborhood. It changes the total atmosphere of the neighborhood. It's going to reduce property values of the neighborhood. The applicant is taking advantage of every wave we can think of, one with the height restriction. A height restriction is there for a reason. And it's for fire safety. The fourth floor may meet NPF codes or whatever. But that doesn't take care of the people who happen to get stuck up there and need to be rescued. Traffic is another major problem. I almost got hit today on Kinnicott. I was walking across the street to my mailbox. I live up top of the street by Prescott. People come around from Child Street, turning onto Kinnicott. They're coming in at 15 miles an hour. By the time they straighten out, they're doing 30. Speed limit is 25. By the time they hit the stop sign, they're doing 40. Down at the other end of Kinnicott, if you're trying to turn onto Schoolhouse Road, no matter where you're going, right or left, if you're trying to go to the left, you can't see all the traffic coming down off the top of Schoolhouse Road because you get obstructions anyway. If you come and bounce Schoolhouse Road, you can't see anybody coming across the bridge until you make a turn. Because there's trees and also stuff in the way. The speed limit over the bridge is 15 miles an hour. Nobody's doing 50. If you're doing 35, they're going slow. You got traffic coming over from, uh, Serpentine. That means that you can't see what's coming down Schoolhouse. It's a traffic bottleneck, the whole area. Uh, you're trying to take advantage of, uh, zoning variances. We require granite curbs. You want to put in bituminous, uh, burn. Why? Because it's cheaper. We require islands in the parking areas with shade trees. You totally disregarded that. So my opinion of the entire project is a no-go.
Kim, um, in terms of the required findings for denial, um, this proposal is not consistent with local needs, including but not limited to the needs identified in the approved comprehensive plans, both of them, 92 and, uh, our most recent one. And/or local zoning ordinances and procedures promulgated in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Um, the, the percentage increase of this proposal is over what would be allowed, is 380%. I mean, this is out of scale, out of proportion. There is a possibility for doing development here that could be profitable for the applicant. Um, but there's nothing in the comprehensive permit that says you can wring every last cent out of the land that you have. And, you know, this is, we're, we're living in a world where big is better, you know? And that isn't Warren. You know, we are a, a, a small town with a small town character, but with a great vibrancy of life and the possibilities. Not just throughout the town. Medicom Avenue, we've just been talking to some folks who are, they built a pickle palace, pickleball palace off, uh, Medicom Avenue. And they're putting in a warehouse there. They want to put in some, and that Schoolhouse Road is going to be where the cars come out of the pickleball place and the warehouse and the retail goes in there. That's another addition. Medicom is a perfect place for this kind of development. And there are other parts of the state that are even better for, for affordable housing. You know, this is, this is a limited vision that has not taken into consideration the people who live in these towns. This is a, a, the kind of thoughtless, one-size-fits-all solution that makes no sense in the world that I want to live in. And the world that I think most of us want to live in. And again, I understand it's there, you know, now the, the, the legislature in its whatever it was thinking when it passed this, uh, opened up the, a Pandora's box. You know, we've dealt with some of these and it's been a long, hard process. There have been some proposals who came, that came before us that I wish we had the, known then what we know now in terms of being able to, to fight that. But there was always compromise in every one of the things that came before us. In this proposal, there was no compromise. Nope. We got it from the, the Superior Court and we're not compromising. Despite hearing from people here, this is too big, we're concerned about it, we're concerned about the traffic. There was never an attempt to compromise. And isn't that the basis of rational government? Some form of compromise? We didn't hear the compromise. And so as a consequence, this isn't an approval with conditions. I'm, uh, recommending that we deny this. Um, based on that, the fact that it is not consistent with local needs, that we do have an approved housing plan that is affordable housing plan that's moving forward, that we have an affordable, uh, housing committee that is working very hard to identify places in this town that are appropriate for affordable housing. And, you know, as Terry said, this thing is not going to make a damn bit of difference in terms of the, the affordability percentage that Mr. Landry has continually talked about. 25% versus 75%. I'm no math genius, but it doesn't, it doesn't fit. You bring in more houses, part of those are affordable, but you've increased the, your, your, it, it's an ever-moving finish line, the way that, the way this legislation was written. And our job as the planning board is to ensure that this town is protected, that our, our lives, our safety, our children, and our sense of place, which comes from the things we see and the things that we don't see, that might be behind a tree or down in a gully. You know, they're, they're all part of our reality, and that's why we're here. So.
Mr. Chairman, can I also add one other finding for denial?
Sure.
Uh, the concerns for the environment and the health and safety occurring in residence have not been adequately addressed in, in the application.
I'd say that, uh, we've also heard that, uh, a number of folks talk about the, the natural environment. And we know that the Kickamewett now is going to be, it's, it's a different place. I mean, I'm out there myself almost every day, um, in the water. And, you know, I've seen this tremendous transformation that has occurred. We are now seeing creatures and it goes to Brayton Point even, you know, the, 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 those huge towers that were built. The ecology of this place has changed. I'm a native Rhode Islander. I never came into Mount Hell Bay when I was a youngster in a, in a small sailboat because I just thought of it as a polluted place. You know, that was back in the, the 60s and the 70s. This place has changed. It's, it's, it's regenerating despite all the damage that was done in the past. And this does not help us in that process of regeneration. This is too much. It's just too much. You know, it's not, we're not here saying you can't build. We're saying this is too much what you want to do here. And you've done a very good job of explaining all of the elements. And we've talked about the trees and all of that, but, I mean, quite frankly, those are, those are irrelevant to the size, scope, and density and intensity of this, this development. Um, and the environmental concerns are equally important uh, to this, to our, our community and to this sense of place. And certainly to me personally and to, I'm sure, many of you personally, and there was a letter in there from Butch Lombardi, who talked about, uh, the return of the heron and the osprey and the bald eagles that I've seen out there, you know, on the river and in the bay. This is a unique and beautiful place, and we want to keep it that way. And we welcome people who come in with a development that meets those criteria. But we have to say, look elsewhere to those who don't. Um, anything else?
At this point, we want to craft the motion. We should probably craft a motion.
Can I say something? Sure.
I've got no objection if you want to build on that property. But it has to be built within, stick to the existing R10, R40 zoning area. But it's any house, single-family houses in there as you want, but then even duplexes. That's not a problem. But it's got to be kept within the character of the community. But it's be, got to be kept within the character of the community.
Okay. Yeah.
At this point, silence from the audience, please, so we can move forward with this. At this point, I'm prepared to. As you are.
At this point, I think on these deliberations, Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I say you bear with me, um, junior to this planning board, so I'm going to take this one slowly. I make a motion. To di- to disapprove the application settler green as depicted on the plans located at Assessor's Platte twenty. Lot sixteen, one fifty-nine and one sixty-four. With plans as presented by the applicant from various engineer and architectural forms, uh, firms. For this motion, the denial is based on. The safety of the community for future and existing residents. As an accumulation of our professionals' opinions. Citing the letter from the Warren Fire Chief dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. The pedestrian traffic and the lack of the application's ability to address the concerns. And the lack of the application's ability to address the concerns of traffic. And the negative impact this application would have specifically at Schoolhouse Road and Serpentine. At this time, I ask if any of my board members, if there's anything I missed. That would like to be added.
Uh, I would like to add that the, um. In reviewing the comprehensive permit, we find, uh. We deny the request, uh, because the proposal is not consistent with local needs, including but not limited to. Needs identified in, in an approved comprehensive plan and in our local zoning ordinance. I also, uh, note that. The denial is based on concerns for the environment and health and safety of current residents that have not been adequately addressed by the application.
And it's what Thapien said, I make a motion that we deny this application.
I second that.
All in favor? Those opposed? Hey. Is there, um, any public comment for items not on the agenda? Yeah, we're going to end it. Um, motion to adjourn.
Make up.
Something. Are we going to begin working on the zoning issues? Starting next month?
Okay, we're going to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of us in favor?